Alrighty. Call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on June 2nd, 2022. I have one minor piece to, one minor thing to add. I'll make a motion to add the resignation letter from Karen Chase to 3.2 on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Anything else anybody needs to add?
Nope.
Alrighty. Approval of minutes. I'll make, does anybody have any changes? I have a minor change on the 19th. Joyce on page three, under the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee. The letter that we sent wasn't a request for an extension. It was just notification that of the date that we'll be sending it in. So if you can just strike the second bullet. That's all I have. Glenn or Rufus, do you guys have anything?
Aye.
Or anything? I'll make a motion to approve the May 5th regular Board of Selectmen meeting and May 19th regular Board of Selectmen meeting minutes as amended or as presented. Sorry. Thanks Rufus. All those in favor?
I.
Aye.
Under Correspondence 3.1, we have an email thread from Andrea Shanyi and Andrea Shanyi regarding the flagpole. She had some, I think some good points to her concern about, you know, spending money on, you know, in sort of a one felled swoop going from a flag to multiple flagpoles. And we can wait to talk about that under the flag policy or we can discuss it here. What is the board's pleasure?
Um, I would think that if we are trying to fly a flag for this month, that we can do it anyway, under the, you know, national flag and, but um, maybe, maybe we'd want to do a survey or something and see if how the town feels about having a multiple flagpoles. I mean, I don't think anyone is against, and I don't think the intent of having the poll, the single poll only due to the national flag was against, aimed at against other flags, but it might be that people want that and then we could go to two possibly three polls. So I don't, you know.
So correct me if I'm wrong, when we spoke about different, you know, other flagpoles and moving a flagpole, we were talking, we were just talking about that in terms of, you know, these are ideas. I mean, we made no resolution.
Right.
Okay.
I didn't think of that we were.
And, and, and you know, and I think, Jean, I think we were going to look into how much it would cost if we did these things and where that would come from. So we don't even have that information currently, right?
Right.
Okay, so. Do we, do we have that information?
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
So we'll continue, we'll, we'll put, we'll put this on the agenda as an item for next, for the next meeting. But we'll keep moving on this evening. So we received a letter of resignation from Karen Chase, who's the, one of the registrars of voters, tendering my resignation as the Democratic Register of Voters for Kent, Connecticut effective Thursday, June 30th, with my last official workday being Monday, June 27th. The Democratic Deputy Registrar Therese Duncan will assume my position on July 1st, 2022. And pursuant to the statute, that's the process. And I know that Therese has been in with, working with Sal and Karen for, you know, a couple, past couple of months, and I think it's going to be a very smooth transition. So I'll make a motion to accept Karen's letter of resignation with great thanks from the board and the townspeople for her, her work she's done while she's been here.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It will be different not seeing her face during.
I know. Right. Well, there's nothing to say she might not be a poll worker. I'm sure.
That's true.
It's gonna be hard for her to just, you know, so I think it'll, you know, we'll still see her, I'm sure.
Good, good.
She's got her newspaper now that she's working with that group of folks. So we'll see a lot of Karen. I'm moving on to public comments. Gonna scan the room. Lynn Harrington, you have your hand up.
Hi Lynn. Hi. This is regarding the meeting, May 19th, where you talked about Park and Rec taking over their Memorial Day duties. That's not a decision that the selectmen and the Park and Rec Director can make. It needs to go through the commission.
Um, yeah, that was just a, just a comment point from where the Legion is looking to hand it back off. But yeah, there was no official decision that was made.
Okay, well, you made it sound like there was, like you and he talked and then you said the Park and Rec will be taking over the Memorial Day duties.
No, we'd have to talk to the commission and then a motion, you know, we have, motions need to be made to make that an official.
Um, duty. With that, the Fire Department or the Lions Club would be a much better option, much better suited for that, in my opinion. I just don't think that's something that Park and Rec should, should do.
Okay.
Also, thank you for setting, sending the Zoom meetings, sustainability team. There are still some missing Zoom meetings and minutes from older meetings. And if you could tell me how many members were tasked in that committee?
Um, I think the membership is on the website.
Yeah, from what I could tell, from what I listened to and read, there's seven members.
No, there were, we went through, Joyce, maybe you can remember, I want to say it was over the winter, we did a roster adjustment because there were member, there were people who had been appointed who were not actually interested in being true actual members. They just were interested in, you know, going to meetings and maybe participating in activities. So on the website, it's Leanna Gant, Joanne Wasty, Amanda Quaid, Jean Speck, and I believe we appointed Miranda Lovato. So it would be 12345.
Okay, I just, I, alright. There's meetings with only three people. There's a meeting with only two people. And I was just curious about that. Didn't seem like you had a forum. There was supposed to be seven. Thank you.
Sure. I'm just, yeah, I don't see any other hands up. Joyce, do you see any? Multiple screens, so it's a little hard to see everybody. I don't see anybody else, so we'll continue to move on. Number five is tax refunds. We have no tax refunds this month, so we'll move to 6.1 approval of ASP Director. And I'm going to hand this off to, I believe, Julia Neff, is going to be on the call.
Yes, thank you. I'm here. Hi, how are you?
Thanks.
I, the Park and Rec Commission would like to hire Thomas Ford as the Director of ASP for the remainder of the school year, all full school days in session. This is a job for four hours a day. We'd like to hire him at $19 an hour. He's passed all his background checks and has experience in coaching and managing others and would be a great fit.
And that was a recommendation from the commission, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission to hire Tom Ford as ASP Director at an hourly rate of $19 an hour.
Second.
Thanks. Any questions Rufus, Glenn?
Oh.
Alrighty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, Julia, I think you have one more.
Yes, one more. So the Park and Rec Commission is also recommending the hiring of Christopher Heller as the Director of Camp Kent at a salary of $19 an hour. He would be starting part-time 15 to 20 hours per week and then moving to a full-time employee June 13th through August 12th. So that means he would be full-time the week before camp starts. Or sorry, the two weeks prior to camp starting and then a week after camp wraps up.
Okay. Um, so I will also make that motion to accept the recommendation of the Park and Rec Commission to hire Christopher Heller as Camp Director at an hourly rate of $19 an hour.
Second.
Thank you. Very excited to see that you guys are gonna have camp this summer. I think you're gonna make a lot of families happy in our town.
We're very excited about it. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything further Glenn, Rufus? Alright, all those in favor?
I.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks Julia. Can shuffle some deck chairs. Alrighty. Rick, I'm gonna turn over to you to talk about the electric mower proposal.
Hopefully you guys received, didn't have all the information yet, so it's late this afternoon, but here are two mowers that I consider worthy enough to be considered commercial, not just home or stuff that's gonna fall apart fairly quickly. As you can see, the prices are up there for electric stuff. It's about double what we would pay for a gas-powered mower, but there are comparisons where over like a six-year period, recoup that money just in savings of gasoline, oil, belts, and service items like that. So. And Jean's been asking me to go for, wants me to get electric trucks and everything else, but I'm not quite willing to do that yet. We could start with a lawnmower.
So there's, there, this is, this follows a plan that is coming down from the Governor's Office that aligns state agencies to start using and replacing their fleets with, with electric buses, public buses, all sorts of transportation fleets. And it follows the big, you know, this, trying to reduce the carbon footprint, trying to reduce greenhouse gases. And so we thought that this could be a first step in that direction.
So these are two different quotes for two different machines.
Uh, these are just to get you started on what the difference would be. I didn't want to go and go out the bit or anything, if I don't have the approval to spend that type of money. We do have 15,000 in the capital plan, so the other, the rest of it would have to come out of somewhere in the operating budget for this year. If we got it before June 30th.
And you have funding in your department that, that could be used to meet the other 15,000?
Yes. In the operating budget, yes.
So one of these machines is 27,339 and the other is 40,030?
Uh, like I put in the explanation on the email that the difference there was one gave me a manufacturer suggested retail price and the other one is off one of our bidding sources. So if we, if I put that same discount to the other one, it brought it down to 28,000 to $40,000 one down to, without any extras, just a basic mower.
Okay.
He was supposed to give me those, those numbers today and never got back to me today, so.
And how much is a comparable gas-powered mower?
About 15.
15?
Yeah.
And I've asked, I've inquired in a couple of places about grants, but I, I haven't heard anything. I don't think they're quite at the point where they're, most of the grants that we're seeing are for, you know, consumer motor vehicles, you know, for cars. But I have a couple of folks checking to see if there's any grant funding coming down the pike on the, on this.
Rick, what's the life expectancy of a mower?
Uh, we usually probably close to 10 years now we're running them.
And, and you think it's likely that we would save the difference over the years and?
According to the manufacturers, as I say, within six years, you're, you're paying back the difference in the initial cost outlay. And then from there on, it would be, you couldn't say it was profit, but, because we aren't mowing commercially or anything like that, but.
Right.
So. But the cost to charge it every night would be, I think it's like two kilowatts per night or something like that to recharge it, so. Just whatever the cost of the power is and then compared to gasoline, whether it goes up or down and. So I just see it, thinking in the chat, how long does it last on? I don't have anything in the literature that says how long they last. I would assume it's like in the other mower that depend on the usage and the care of it.
Is this something?
Last just as long as one of the gasoline ones as far as the way they're, the structure is built and everything.
Right.
Is this something we need immediately? Do we have a mower that's about to go down? There is this, um?
No, I want that was due for replacement, so this would be that one.
This would be that one. Okay. How many mowers do we have this, like this, of this caliber?
Well, one, we have one that's 52-inch, one that's 72-inch. And then another one that's a walk behind, but this is a small zero turn. That's the 52-inch one.
Okay.
And see, somebody asked me how long we've had it. Trying to remember the year we bought it. Pretty sure it was like 10 years ago, but I'm not. I'd have to look that up to be sure. Again, these are, I didn't go into these, the bidding or anything much here until, because I didn't have, didn't want to do that until after I had approval to spend any funding, so. Same as any other mower, Lynn, whoever we buy it from, if we can't do it, then they repair it for us.
Rick is, um, is, as I'm hearing, mowing outside, is an electric mower, it's quieter, right, than a?
Yeah, there's no, uh, no engine noise. You'll hear noise, like noise from the blades. But that's one of the points that they do with these mowers. If you're around schools or buildings and stuff, there's no disturbance for that. And also the operator, there's now this hearing protection and stuff like that. You don't have to be as, have as strong a hearing earplugs or earmuffs or anything, because the, it's only that blade noise from the locker.
I think there are a lot of reasons to, to make this change that are good reasons.
I think so. I think ultimately, we, we are gonna be more and more pressed to get away from fossil fuels and, so we might, you know, this seems to me to be just like dipping your toe in the ocean to see whether it's, how cold it is.
Yeah, that's sort of why, why Rick is coming with this rather than, you know, let's replace one of the huge plow trucks.
Right.
This is a, you know, it's sort of an entry into this new, new platform.
I, I think, I think it's a good idea.
It's gonna take me quite a while to be real interested in electric plow trucks. I don't think nighttime work and stuff like that.
Baby steps.
This one, you know, you, we're never mowing at night, so it's got all night to charge every day. Lasts just over seven hours on a complete charge and.
So probably designed by a union worker.
Well, I gotta get coffee.
Not for a minute more.
So, um, Rick, are you looking for a motion from us to authorize a limit or are you?
Well, I wouldn't say a limit, that we got bid numbers, but if you're, well, they'll let me, you know, seek bids, knowing that it's gonna be in that price range. Then I'll do that and we can make the motion when we get the bids back in. I didn't want to bother doing all that until we had the okay to or the approval to at least look at spending that much money.
Yeah, I think it, I think you have consensus.
Okay.
From all three of us to, to go forward and get some bids.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thanks. Moving on to old business, 7.1, the Assessor Tax Collector Computer Issue Update. So Joyce has gone back to Charter and as of yesterday, our internet service speed was upgraded from 600 megabits to one gig. So that's, that's gonna improve that pipeline and we've, we're gonna work with CEN, which is the, they're like the major supplier that supplies fiber to the schools and to the library and everybody. And they notified us that they have some funding that's gonna be coming available from municipalities, so that will save us an enormous amount of money for this fiber connection to the town hall. It may take a little bit longer, but, um, you know, walking away from having the fiber installation covered. That would be, I think, I think it's a no-brainer to accept that, that, that funding. So Will, Joyce and I'll continue to work with CEN on that. And Joyce, and is, I think I saw Jen do Bray.
Yep, I'm here.
Thanks. Um, any, any new issues?
I did my bridge yesterday, same old issue, took 13 minutes, came to Sharon today, took less than five. Overall process took 25 minutes in Kent, which took less than five minutes in Sharon. So not happy, no improvement. Didn't know about your upgrading the Charter yesterday, so I don't know. I was doing this at 4:30 or four o'clock. Definitely would appreciate continuing on with CEN. You know, I was gonna say, get an electric mower. I think you need fiber in the town hall. It's just another sign of the times.
Yep.
Agreed.
On to 7.2, Scotty Cook BIA update, Jeff Senkowitz provided a written report that's in, should be in the meeting folder. And really to wrap up his, his report, he is continuing to work on the, you know, the comment that is gonna be due back July 5th to, to that BIA application. So that's the, that's sort of the big nut that he's working on right now. And then there are two other, uh, two other sub-issues. One is the repetitionning ban. So the, there were some court cases that recently struck down the regulation banning previously denied petitioners the right to repetition for federal acknowledgement. The, I'm sorry, the, the ban, the Department of the Interior is proposing maintaining the ban with stronger reasoning. And there's a comment period that we think is June 30th and he's gonna draft a letter for us to submit for that as well. The other one is, the Department of Interior is looking into, is proposing new regulation, new rules, sorry, governing the procedures that have to be followed for taking land into trust for the benefit of acknowledged Indian tribes. And that's the third bullet point on his report. And he's got, he's extremely busy with this initial comment on the application. And so he has yet to dig into that third issue. But still in process, will likely have a meeting with him, I would say probably mid-month to just get from him where they are as far as the draft and, and just an update for the board. So that's that. Any questions? Um, 7.3, under Swift House. So there were a couple of things that I needed to follow up on. One was the waiving of liability insurance. So in the, in the motion that the Swift House Task Force passed, um, one of the bullets said, talked about extending the town's liability insurance to cover complimentary use of the Swift, Swift House by Kent's civic organizations. And we do have it in writing from Kerma from a couple of months ago, and I think we've talked about this a number of times, that town and non-town entities do need to provide that, that, that certificate of insurance. Naming the town as an additional secure, in short, so if we were to, we wouldn't be able to extend our liability policy because they're not town entities and town entities have a specific, there's a definition for what a town entity is. So, you know, in, in thinking about these, some small civic organizations, Garden Club, other small civic organizations that use the buildings, would it be feasible and possible to create some sort of fund that, either a fund or, or give them grants to help them with some operating expenses, which could include a liability policy under that tool-up program that we talked about and found out about from Kerma a few months ago. So that would be one, you know, a couple of ways to help out organizations like the Garden Club who are very small and they have very limited funding, but, but still keeps us doing what we're supposed to do in asking for that liability certificate of insurance from them. I don't know where we would find that funding, so, you know, that would be something that we would need to work with Barbara and Board of Finance to figure out. Work with Barbara and Board of Finance to figure out. Uh, Rufus, I think you're trying to talk in your on meet.
Sorry. Um, I I think it's a good idea to try to figure out a way to to help some of these. Groups out who's, you know, like the Garden Club, which is specifically. Does stuff for the enhancement of the town um. And uh. You know, whether. Whether it's in the operating budget down the road on a specific line item for. That or under grants, I think that's a good way to go.
Yeah, that's sort of where I was. Headed, but it doesn't um. Help them in the.
In this coming year, no. I, you know, I certainly back the other idea of of seeing if we could. Get. Some people in town to. Organize a little. Charitable fund. Specifically for that purpose. If we came up with the groups and and the. You know, maybe you could even get an umbrella policy. From an insurance company that would be cheaper. To cover the various groups, you know, maybe that's. We get a figure and then we could. See if people in town would be willing to support. Helping those groups specifically with that one item.
Um, so on the ADA coordinator. Piece, um. Joe Manley let me know that he is not interested in taking on duties of an ADA coordinator. Um, I also did do, I asked out to the cog. What? What the towns do for, um, sorry, I'm just trying to find the the responses, what they do for ADA coordinators. And. So, um. Of the twelve towns that responded. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six. Do not have a position of ADA coordinator in their towns. Um, in Falls Village, the Emergency Management Director is also the ADA Coordinator. In Goshen, it's done, um, the coordination is done by one of the selectmen, but they report any violations to building official. Um, on one, two, three, four, the other towns are, um, it's all assigned. As uh, co-located with the building official. So that's sort of um. It's kind of ever all over the place, many, I was surprised that many did not have one at all. So, um, we would need to. You know, I guess we could talk to. Somebody. None of them had um, job descriptions either, so we can um. We would need to come up with a job description and figure out what that. What the duties would be for that position and I did leave um. Lynn, I left John Worthington a message, um, so hopefully we'll have, you and I'll have a conversation um, in the next couple of days.
Good, because I I I think it's important that we we search for an ADA coordinator. To resolve this. Uh, may I refer to uh, uh, the email by Donna Hayes? Um, that that's in the folder, correct?
Yes.
Um, I I I thought that was all very interesting, um, and um, I I noticed um. I noticed her recommendation at the end that that maybe Joe uh, and or Stan uh, could classify the building, so so is it? Is it not classified currently? I see, I see Donna's hand up now.
So I had a conversation with them and the first floor is um, classified as. Um, business use and the second floor is classified as, um, sorry, I'm just looking for my note as uh, storage. And that's, and Donna can speak to this. It's not uh, zoning, it's from a building perspective, but go ahead, Donna, sorry.
Yeah, uh, uh, Zan had sent me an email wanting to know why I don't do the classification. The town is exempt from zoning classifications. Um, and then so, but they are not exempt from building a fire marshal code or a classification, so. Where I might call something retail, um, the building official will call it mercantile. If if they have different groups within the different classifications, so um. It would be still up to them to make the classification because. Zoning just doesn't apply to this building at this point in time, so that's why. Um, it goes to them.
Sorry, Rufus, did you have a question?
Do I have, I know.
Okay, sorry.
I was just thinking, I was going over the Donna's. Dateline.
So currently, the first floor is business and the second floor is storage.
Yes.
It used to, there used to be an apartment up there, I don't remember when.
Um, it was a while ago.
Back in the eighties, I think. Because I think they made the trans, they they, when that apartment was um, relinquished. That's, I believe, when it became storage.
Oh, must have been somewhere in the. It was after I moved here, because I've, I responded to that second apartment a few times. To the person who lived there. But it's a long time.
I think it was in the eighties, it was. The Historical Society was still using the ground floor and they used it for storage after elderly women moved out. Sorry about my dog.
So. There are a couple other. Questions, I think, well, we we did hear from Randy and I don't think anything has changed from. From his point of view, as far as the. Requirements for public buildings. And I guess, you know, we need to make a decision about, are we. Are you instructing me to create a job description and create a job for an ADA coordinator and? How are we going to flow through that?
Is there no state job description for that particular position? Instead of creating one out of full cloth?
Um, I can check with um.
John Worthington might be able to tell you that.
Yeah, I don't, um, yeah, I can check with him when we talk on the phone, but I can also ask up to the state to see if they have something. It's a good idea. Alrighty. Um, moving on, are we ready to move on or?
Yeah, I I would say let's let's look into a job description and look into an ADA coordinator. Just that seems to be the next step to me.
Salary review, um, I'd actually like to move. To have a special meeting about this so that we can just. Take it and focus, give it the time that it needs to get some focus to it as a single topic meeting. Cause I'm, I had read through the. Report, I found another report um, in a file somewhere. I just, I need more time to to consume and and. Think about how we're going to walk through this process. So I'd like to do a special meeting.
I don't know whether a special meeting is necessary at this stage. You know, we we have quite a bit of time. But I don't think we need to keep it on the agenda. Um, until we're ready. To, I'm not completely through this other study and you just said there was another one you found.
Yeah, I can scan it in and send it.
You know, um. I think. Part of what we're gonna be doing is that we should not just concentrate on past studies, which.
Right.
My mind have less bearing on the present than looking at comparables in towns. At present. Um, I think that's gonna have. Uh, more weight. On on what is happening. So. You know, we we have to do a bunch of research first and then. Then we can sit down.
Yeah, I'm not ready to talk much about this today. That's a big document.
Okay.
Donna has her hand up.
Hi, I just, um, I know a couple of meetings ago, someone had made a comment about, oh my god, it's so long, it's not long. If you look at the actual report, it's not long, what's long? Are the job descriptions, the multiple job descriptions that are attached to the back of it? So I don't think you even need to read those because there's new ones that have been done, so it's. It's not a long report, it's, it really is not, so I I just wanted to point that out that there's stuff in there that you don't really need to be looking at. If you're gonna look at it at all. So, thanks, thank you.
So, moving on to seven point five, the. Video conference system update, Joyce gave us a, just a quick report, written report. And it's in the folder, I don't think we really need to spend any more time on that. Making forward progress.
I I noticed that and um, is it, has there also been movement on the upstairs and uh, the owl and the TV up there that we were talking about?
So the the big project is the downstairs. And where? So. With Karen retiring, with um, Park and Rec growing, the building is running out of space. So hopefully in the next two weeks, I can get to sort of rethinking. Some space issues on the second floor to move folks around, but we. It's it's possible that we may need to use that space for um, personnel. And so we would have to go to the, you know, using the large meeting room for all meetings. And Joyce did a look back and there's really what was. If you had to take a percentage of the time where we had crossovers of meetings happening at the same time, Joyce.
I don't have that, but in front of me, but it wasn't a lot.
So, um. We need to consider that. There's only so much. The brick walls. Have space for in the building. So hopefully we'll have some time to spend on that in the next couple of weeks and come back at the um, next meeting.
What's in the basement?
Uh, storage, it's not um, ADA accessible, so. Can't use the basement, can't use the enormous space up in on the third floor either, unfortunately. Moving on to seven point six, Emergency Management Director Job Description. Um, so Rufus sent us an email that's in the folder. With um. An alternate job description that he came up with. Rufus, you wanna just give us a um. Overview of that? While I look to find it, to share it.
Well, there was, you know, um, at the moment, we're. Looking at it as a volunteer position, so and there was input from. Folks about that and then um, I. Looked at a few things and I I don't, I looked at a lot of other towns, I don't think we need to have. Every single thing in there was, um. And I. Thought that. We should be a little bit more flexible. Um, sometimes, um. You know, are willing to hire and 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 uh. Allow people to take some courses, I think, you know. There should be some flexibility there, that was my thinking, um, and make it a more readable and.
Well, the, um, so we would need to, there's a template that I started using, that I started using when I started. And it was borrowed from D A S and it's a best practice template, so I started moving everything over. Moving the job descriptions as we were reviewing them over into this new template, so that it would need to get. Inserted into the the template that we're using. Um, there are, you know, there's a number of things that. Were removed that are in the statute. That's part of the Emergency Management Director's duties and um. Responsibilities and authority and I did um. Was able to find a little bit of information. Through a number of different sources on um. What other towns do for emergency management in the area. Let me see if I can pop this up on a. Spring chair. So it's not totally filled in, but you can see, so it's the town going across. Compensation if it is paid. Um, whether they use that E M P G funding, if it's part of another position and other comments. So. It varies pretty widely. I think I'm pretty sure they're all part-time. So this just, you know, gives you some sort of. View of. What other towns are doing. And there's even one that's also the eighty. So I can send that out. Um, I was hoping to hear from these other towns that um, are down at the bottom. So I can, you know, continue to fill that in or I can send it to you as is.
Could be more helpful, filled in.
Okay, so I'll need a little bit more time to hear back from folks.
Um, if you wanna send us uh, that template, I mean, I could. Look at things and I just, you know, you're looking at at what other job descriptions are, it's not necessarily saying that. You know, that. I don't, I still don't think you need to have every single thing that the, you know, the state says is. Required in the job description, um. You know, the the duties basically. Are um. You know, the way it's it, it's. Worded from the state is laborious and I just think. It's unnecessary, it doesn't mean that when you. Are gonna sit down and actually interview people and talk about the the requirements, you're not gonna to get into those details. But, you know, it was, uh, you've got quite a range of what goes on with the different towns in terms of their approach to job descriptions. I don't think we need to be a mini-state.
No, and I, that's, I don't think they put it together. Well, I know they don't put it together for that reason. They put it together just like any other. Like we were talking about before, the ADA coordinator, if at the state level, they had a sample, they Demis created that using, you know, they have a team of attorneys and and they, they created that for the towns to use. It's in the EMPG paperwork. It's in that emergency management program grant paperwork. It's not a state level job description. It's intended, it's, they created it for the towns to use for their town job description. And there, you know, the, the job descriptions vary for us. There, I think the one for the park and rec director is like six pages long, or used to be six pages long, might be less than that now. But there's, you know, there's qualifications that these folks need so that they can hit the ground running and do what they need to do in, in any emergency that they're needed by the town.
Very true, but you know, you look at the different towns, that some of them are a lot bigger than us who, whose job descriptions are you know, follow their own format, you know, it's, it's a guideline. We do not have to you know, just put it in as, or, and that that was my intent when I tried to come up with things. So you know, you've got one and two-page job descriptions in other towns. That would work. So.
Yeah, that's, that's what struck me was I, when I read all of these, I mean, Litchfield's one page, um, Redding, Roxbury, Washington are two pages. Bethel was on the big side at three plus and, uh, Richfield was, was six pages. Um, and, and Gene, what you gave us is three plus and Rufus, what you gave us is one plus. Um, and what was, what was interesting was also the old job description, which I wanna talk about for a second. So, uh, so the town of Kent does have a job description, or at least had one. Um, I don't know when it was adopted and if it's still in effect, but Gene, you found this and you gave it to us, and this thing is less than a page. But, but nevertheless, my, my question is, is this still in effect or not?
I poured over many, 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 many months of minutes during the timeframe that I was pretty sure that that would have been moved on and I couldn't find, I couldn't find a motion that said we're adopting this job description. But there's, you know, there's been a sort of waxing and waning as far as the adoption of job descriptions in our town and in small municipalities all over the place. Um, but it's really the foundation for a job and it's, we need to, I, I don't know what, you know, if there's value in that undated piece of paper that was from probably when Tony Amon was the emergency management director. You know, spending much time focusing on that, cause that was also probably was in what, oh, three, I wanna say, oh, three, oh, four.
So when our last, uh, director was appointed, which wasn't that long ago, was he given a job description? Was he given this or anything?
No, we didn't have one. This is, this is.
Oh, we, this was one.
This was.
I did not find that until when I told you guys I found that. It was like the night before.
So, you know, obviously there was one that the town had, but there was no knowledge of it.
I'll just make one more point. I mean, um, you know, again, some towns have very, very descriptive job descriptions and others are, are much shorter and ours in the past has been shorter. So whether we go short or whether we go long, I mean, we could still discuss this, but what seems to me to be a, I don't know if it's a sticking point or whatever is you know, is this a volunteer position or not? So if it is a volunteer position, I think it needs to be stated as such. If it's not, then it's not. But, um, but I think we need to be as descriptive as possible as what is the name of the position? And what is it? Um, and, uh, you know, and the rest of it, we can, we could still discuss if we want, but, um, but I think if we can get through that, we can get through this and move on. Seems to me.
So I know Eric turned his video on and then I'll call on Donna. You're on mute, Eric, I think.
So Gina, you know, the mine didn't, can you actually click on that in, in the folder? Or it was just the letter that I sent?
What was the email? I think it was a three-page document.
I just didn't know whether other people could actually see what.
Yeah, it's the, um, the email that you sent and then the two-page job description.
I've got it.
Eric, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Guys, I think you're missing the point here. It doesn't matter whether the job description is one page or 10 pages. It's the content that's in it. And Rufus, you're, I, I just don't understand your justification for your changes. You took out all the training requirements. And in order to do this position, you need to have basic incident command training and you took it out, all of it. Uh, you know, you claim that in your email that you put the, uh, job description in line with Washington and Roxbury, I think, which both job descriptions in Washington and Roxbury require ICS training. So why you'd remove that, I, I, I just don't know. And then you keep writing volunteer. Why, why would you box yourself into a corner like that? Okay, maybe the, the position currently is a volunteer, uh, position, but is it gonna remain that way? You're gonna put that in the job description?
Right now, it is volunteer, Eric. So, you know, that's what it is. If we change it, we would drop that word.
Well, it's actually not Rufus, so it's required in the statute to have a, an emergency management director. And really, the, the definition of the volunteer is someone who offers their time and in-kind services to someone or an organization. And that's not how this works.
But that's how it's always been stacked.
No, you're missing, you're missing a really salient difference. They don't come to us and say, hey, we wanna be, I wanna, Joe Smith wanna be the emergency management director. We as the town, I as the first selectman, have to appoint someone. And so I go out and when we were in the, literally the first weeks of COVID and both emergency management director and the deputy both quit, I needed to find someone. So I did the math and went out and found someone and appointed that person. So these folks don't come to us. So they're not, yes, are they giving their time and they don't get paid? Absolutely. They're uncomp, uncompensated. And that is shown in very clearly in the job description that I, that I posed to the board that the rate, the pay rate is none, cause there is no pay rate, because it's not a paid position. So it's not, they don't come to us. We, we, we need to post this job. It is a, it's a job. It's a position. You know, and we can, we can fuss all day we want. But at the end of the day, it doesn't say volunteer emergency management director in the Connecticut general statutes title 28. It says emergency management director. And it would, it would sort of be the same as saying, you know, well, the treasurer is paid, so do we call that the paid treasurer? And then we call this the unpaid emergency management director. It, you know, you go, when you're talking about creating job descriptions, it's to describe the job and it's to, you know, reference back to statutes, regulations, federal law. And that's what we're doing. And the, of, for this position, the training requirements are probably one of the most important pieces of this job description, cause you feel, like Eric was saying, if you've got somebody who's got no ICS training. It, the, the entire structure is based on their knowledge of ICS and it's a deep knowledge of ICS. You're not talking about somebody who's taken, you know, the three online courses that are, you know, simple, basic stuff. You're talking about someone who can speak the language and understand the structure when they're working with Demis, when they're working with DPH, when they're working with the different, um, law enforcement agencies, you know, if you have a big incident, somebody said to me the other day, the hurricane doesn't care if we have three people in town or 30 million people in town. The hurricane's gonna come through and it's gonna do what it's gonna do. And we have a lot of risk in town. We have three private schools that account for many hundreds of students and faculty and staff that if a hurricane came blowing through here, we don't want somebody who is saying, who's asking me or asking you or asking Andrew, you know, who do, who do I call at, you know, for our regional coordinator? Who do, how do I, there's, there's a lot to the position.
I didn't say there wasn't. And I did say that a general requirement was working knowledge of state, local state and federal regulations, statutes and laws. So that includes training. So that, but that doesn't need, you don't need to have two pages of every single course that they're gonna be taking to know NIMS or anything else. That doesn't need to be in the job description. You, yes, we have to go out and find people. Um, and that's part of the actual part of the interview. Find out exactly what they have or not. I'm not saying, but you don't need to list it in the, in the job description. You know, you don't need all of that. You really don't.
So we're not talking about a job description for a, you know, for when I redid the template for the job descriptions, the important things that someone who is looking for a position in government, whether it's to work in, you know, as a registrar or voters or emergency management or a park and rec, there are qualifications and, and there are basic qualifications that everybody has to have. And then there are those preferred qualifications that are sort of the icing on the cake. And that's where in those, you know, in your interview, you're gonna be talking to a candidate and asking them about those preferred qualifications, but the, the basic minimum requirement qualifications, that's gonna send you the candidates that you're looking for. And if we don't include in a clear concise way, and that may be a two-page or three-page job description, if we don't include that, then we're gonna get tangled up with 30 candidates who we have to wave through. How much do they know about ICS? I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste time in interviewing, you know, going through 30 applications to, to see who's got how much ICS and well, is this one, is this one enough? Is this one not enough? Well, I'm not sure. And, 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 and beyond, you know, these job descriptions should outlive all of us, so that someone 10 years from now can say, I don't know anything, I don't know how to spell ICS, but I know that these are the minimum qualifications that are required for this job. So we're gonna get the right candidates to come in who are qualified for the job. And then the icing on the cake is how you decide who you pick. That's, so that's sort of the methodology of, of why you have those minimum requirements.
You're gonna get people regardless if they're applying, you, you know, you, you have, have to have seen it already. People apply for jobs that aren't qualified for those jobs. You flip through their applications. You don't interview them. You're, you know, you.
Right. And that's because we've outlined what the qualifications are. If we don't outline what the qualifications are, then we're gonna, we're still gonna get all those resumes and all those applications, but we're not gonna be able to have a standard. There's not gonna be a benchmark, a standard to, to, um, base the candidates on.
Most people are going to know what to put in their resume. And that's not, you know, I disagree with you.
Donna, do you?
It is a volunteer position at the moment, always has been in Kent.
I was just gonna call on Donna. She's been waiting for a while.
It's okay. I mean, Rufus is done. I can make.
I'm done.
Okay. Um, just a couple of things. You said that people come to you um, as of, for volunteer positions. I don't think that's true at all. We advertise on our website, on our Facebook page. The Board of Selectmen appoint the Inland Wetland, um, Commission members and they are volunteers. So I don't know what the difference is between and a deputy emergency management or a manager, emergency management person, they're still a volunteer. Whether they're an inland wetlands commissioner, they're going through the same process as these people will be going through. That's, that's just one thing that I'd like to point out. Um, and then secondly, I don't understand why you're spending so much time on these job descriptions. They're not budgeted, but yet you don't have the time to look at the job descriptions for the people in town hall. You know, I mean, it would be nice if we had the support that you're giving to two positions that aren't even approved. If you gave that support to the people who are currently working. And I, I'm not saying we don't need emergency management. I'm not saying that at all. I don't care who goes into it. I think that you must, you must be transparent. And if you want this to be a paid position, full-time, part-time, then make it that way and stop with the games. Because quite honestly, everybody that I talk to says the same thing. Just be upfront, be transparent. You ask us all to be transparent. Be transparent. That's all. That's all I gotta say. You know, I mean, it, I think everybody misses a lot of the points that are happening here. And I think everybody needs to figure out really where this is gonna end up going. And I think you need to be transparent about it. Thanks.
Just scanning to see if there's any other hands up.
I, I've got one more.
Who was that?
Derek.
Go ahead. Sorry. I can't see everybody's pains.
So Rufus, I'm just trying to make sense that I understand this. So you made revisions to a job description. A job description for the town of Kent. But instead of reviewing it with the person in the position and the person who helped write the current job description, you went to the land use administrator for her advice. I, I, I'm just shocked by that. Why wouldn't you have come to me?
No, that's not true. Eric, he did not come to me. I made very minor changes to the job description by adding the words volunteer. That was the only thing I did. Everything else I left. And I shared those changes with both Glenn and Rufus and said, this is my belief as an HR administrator for 25 years of what changes need to be made to the job descriptions. Take it for what it's worth. But Rufus did not come to me. I went to him with minor changes. Those other changes were made by Rufus. So you could have asked me that question and you would have gotten the correct response.
I'm, I'm just, uh, reading the email that Rufus sent. So it says that, uh, borrowing from other towns and Donna Hayes suggestions. So.
Right. Those are my suggestions that I made to them. They did not come to me. Neither of them did.
Mainly it was my reaction to what I thought was just overly detailed job description, which was the draft drive job description put together.
So Rufus, would it help you to see the other job descriptions that we've revised in the last two and a half years? So we did the ROVs, we did the park and rec director, we've done the, I think the assessor transfer station, would it help to see sort of the battle rhythm of of our town versus seeing what other towns have done with that? It will at least give you a frame of reference.
You know, I just, I just find that you know, a, a job description. I, it is my belief that you don't have to include every single course, every single, everything else. The training, you know, if you're going to get, you know, it's like the park and rec director. We, we had people all over the place. We had people who, you know, they responded to the ad, they ignored what we asked for. And so out of the, you know, probably 30 applications or whatever that came in, I don't remember how many there were. There were quite a few that, you know, we narrowed it down and we chose, that's part of our job is to choose the people we're going to interview who show on their resume that they actually have working knowledge of, of the position or training. You almost want the person who is applying for the job to have the wherewithal and the brains to put together a resume that they don't have to like look at every single thing on the job description and create their resume. You know, it, you're almost better off in my mind not putting everything down. Because you're, it, it makes the application process where you weed people out easier for you. Because the people that have the, the knowledge are going to put down what they've done. And that separates them out from the rest of them. So, you know, I mean, I, I think that what I put in there was painted the general picture of what you need and then you see what you get and then, but it's up, up to the selectmen to, you know, go through those applications. That's where the real work happens. And that work is, is, is not that time consuming to separate them out.
Right. And I, I, I think in a strange way, we're agreeing because if you have, you know, for example, the, so the social services, well, for any of them, you, you've got the examples of duties, you've got the knowledge, skills and abilities. And then you've got the minimum qualifications and the preferred qualifications. So someone applies and you take that job description and you look at it and you say, nope, they don't have this. Yes, they have this. Yes, they have this. Yes, they have this. We'll, we'll interview that person so that we can find out about that one thing that they're not, that they don't meet the qualifications for. But then you get another application where they don't have any of the minimum qualifications. And that immediately is going to say to you, this is not a candidate that is right for this position. Because you have that benchmark, you have that frame of reference, that's got the qualifications that we're looking for in, in the position that can go out and do what they need to do. So I, I think we're, we're agreeing from, from different standpoints. And there's things in the one that I created that you took out that are in the statute and, and our best practice that I, you know, I, I couldn't support something that doesn't include at least the statutory requirements.
I believe I said anywhere that we're not going to include statutory requirements.
My point is that the things that are in the one that I created that I flexed from the one that is the recommendation, the example from the EMPG. Those are, those are based on what's required and referenced in the statute, but you pulled out a lot of the stuff that's referenced.
It was over, it was Gina, it was just, it was trying to beat a dead horse. You know, I mean, the first thing is your duty is to advise based on Connecticut statutes, you, that right there, that's the assumption that anybody has to know what the statutes are. You don't need to then outline everything out over and over and over again. And I think probably there are a lot of towns that have a similar thinking. Cause very few of the job descriptions had that. Doesn't say that you're not looking for people who are knowledgeable, but you don't, you don't need to do that. I didn't realize you had a template. I would have asked you for it and I would have made one up based on your template.
Could, could we do something like this? This, this is just an idea. I'm, I'm looking at Rufus at what you wrote and Gina, what you wrote. This would satisfy me. I don't know about either of you, but just right at the top. Position, emergency management director. That's what all of the towns said. Hours, hours of work are dependent on emergency situations and conditions. What you said Rufus. Jean, what you wrote about rate, none. And then a bullet, something like this. The emergency management director is a volunteer position that is appointed by the Board of Selectmen and reports to the first selectman. Clear. Right at the top. And then the rest of this document. Jean, if you think, if, if, if you and Eric think that some things need to be added, if Rufus, if you are okay with that, then we could add a few, a few stipulations, a few, a few things that need to be in there. And then the document will be about two pages, which is about what most other towns our size are.
Right.
So, so if we can compromise some way by just putting a little bit more meat in there, but maybe not have it too verbose, would that satisfy all of us? Would that be descriptive enough without being too descriptive?
No, that's a, that's a good compromise.
So what, what were you saying to other, the other sections to take out?
So in terms, yeah. So in, in terms of what needs to be put back into Rufus's, like, I guess, Jean, that would be up to maybe you and Eric, you know, what, what else could be, what should be put in there? Like what's essential that that was taken out? Maybe if you, if you and Eric added that in there, we could take a look at it again. That might satisfy everybody.
Okay. Yeah, we can all work with Eric and we can come up with a sort of mashup of the two. So, so we can move on with the meeting.
One more hand?
Uh, thank you, Donna. Yeah, I just, I mean, I understand that you want to put as much as you possibly can in the job description, but when you do that, you also weed people out, don't have those total qualifications, but who are still capable of bringing the ability to get those qualifications onto the table. It reduces the amount of money if you're going to hire them. It would reduce the amount of money that you would need to pay, but it's also a motivating type of action to that the people will say, you know what, I can achieve that. At least let me try. But if you put in that they must have this, 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 and this, they're not going to apply. So you've got it, you're, you're, you're roping yourself into getting less candidates who might be better than the candidate that has everything. So I think you'd be better off dropping some of the requirements, just doing the basic. And I see Jean, your board. So, but that's just.
No, I, that's okay.
No, I was worried about somebody who just fell outside.
Um, I, that's Donna, you put it very succinctly. That was part of my thinking that you want to keep. Uh, you, you, you want to attract people who, like you said, may be qualified, but may not have all the qualifications. And, you know, you can't do it the way that other thing was written.
Eric, sorry.
And I'm sorry. I have that in my notes also. If someone applies, you know, we can put something about you must meet these requirements or these training requirements within six months or a year.
Right. Well, and a lot of that comes up in the interview process, you know, these, this is what I've done so far, but this is I taught school for a long time and there were plenty of teachers who had all the qualifications on paper. And you put them in a classroom and they weren't very good. The nature of the beast.
Sure.
Will you want somebody to come in who understands how to deal with people, understands the, the whole thing? And, and maybe they don't have all the qualifications. Don't scare them away because they might've been the ideal person. You don't know that.
So we'll come back with a revised one for the next meeting. So moving on to, we'll just skip to 7.8 because the deputy is the same discussion. Pandemic, the numbers continue to trend in a much better way. Fortunately, we still keep our eye on it every day. We have plenty of masks here at the town hall. We're almost out of tests we had during that little uptake in the last month, month and a half. We had a lot of people coming in for tests. So we have probably 40 tests, test kits left. DPH did notify us that they are going to be, they're looking to renew contracts for the state testing sites for another year. So we'll, you know, walk through that process with them. There's no, you know, pinch points as far as having it at the transfer station. It seems to be a sort of ideal location for it. So we'll continue to uh, talk with DPH about that. Um, the 7.9, the Betty update, I don't have anything new on that. Um, and then going to the flag policy, I reached out to Randy and asked him if he would draft something and he said absolutely, but I haven't heard back from him yet.
On the flag policy that we had, I was wondering on the last page, you did said.
So that was something that Glenn drafted up that went to Randy, but Randy is going to come back to us with a, a draft policy.
My only question was the use of the word exclusively on the third bullet point. Um, I thought that might be taken the wrong way. So.
I can mention that to Randy.
Yeah. Any, any indication when we might hear from him about this? Will it be this month?
No, I'll, I'll loop back around with him tomorrow.
Yeah. Cause I, I think it is important that, that he gets back to us.
It's in his hopper for sure.
Good. And then in terms of the flag poll, Jean, you're still going to look into that, how much that might be, I mean.
Yeah, I'll get, um, price, you know, I'll.
So we'll.
We need to get a.
Discuss further.
Couple of different options.
Okay.
And then moving on to eight selectmen's reports.
Nothing for me.
I'm good.
Um, I'll have a, a short written report for the minutes. A couple of folks came together and we'll be doing that vigil on Friday night. And we're working on sort of a plan to make sure everybody's safe because we anticipate a lot of walking traffic. So just for people to be careful when they're out on the road tomorrow night.
What time will that be?
It's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Okay.
So with that, Apple says it's 5:27. So I will make a motion to adjourn at 5:27.
So moved.
Awesome. All those in favor? Thank you. Everybody have a good evening. Enjoy the weather.
You too. Thanks.
Going to continue to clear up.